Brother Amish, should we start or should we give couple of minutes for people to join in?
Brother, I think we have, the number of registration is, I think more than 200.
300, more than 300.
Okay, so I, I may like, you know, suggest that we wait for few minutes. There was some, 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 some problem also somebody reported on the group if you can see. That some people did not receive the link. Is there a way to send the links again?
I think that had been already taken care of, that issue. I think that was just a person specification.
Okay. Okay, so I think in two minutes, two, two to three minutes, we can start insha'Allah.
Insha'Allah.
I think we should start brother Rizwan. Brother Rizwan, I can't hear you.
Yes, brother.
Can you hear me now?
Y- yes.
Oh, okay. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, alhamdulillahi rabbil alamin, wa salaatu wa salaam ala ishrafil anbiyaayi wa musalineen. Nabiyyan Muhammad wa ala ali wa sahbihi ajma'in. Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. And a very good day to all of you joining us from different parts of the world. On behalf of accounting and auditing organization for Islamic financial institutions. Its secretariat and our partners for this public hearing today. But participation banks association of Turkey. We welcome you to this second public hearing on AOF standards and auditing. Number one, framework of auditing. We would also like to extend our best wishes and greetings on the occasion of the holy month of Ramadan. May we all continue to have a blessed month insha'Allah. As you know, ladies and gentlemen, auditing for Islamic financial institutions and Islamic financial transactions. Having compliance with Sharia principles and rules. And AOF financial accounting standards in particular have been part of AOF standard setting mandate since its inception. As indicated in its name as well, accounting and auditing organization. The approach that we have, the approach that was there was to develop limited set of standards. Focusing only on the value addition and the specific aspects of auditing related to Sharia principles and rules. And specific business models and structures related to Islamic finance. While allowing the use of other established practices of auditing, in particular if by the international standards on auditing. Issued by International Auditing and Assurance Standard Board, IAASB. If the auditing standard issued by AOF, they are generally issued by AOF governance and ethics board. With the help of AOF professional auditing standards committee task. AOF so far has issued about 119 standards and technical pronouncements. Of which eight are auditing related standards. Considering significant developments in the auditing profession in the last several years. An auditing standards revision project was initiated by AOF governance and ethics board. To align AOF standards on auditing with the current established practices of auditing. And in line with the updated AOF strategy for auditing standard setting. It is expected that this project shall include. This standard that is being presented today on the framework of auditing. Another standard on special considerations of an audit. A guidance note on illustrative auditors report. And a guidance note on the audit of Islamic finance products, services, structures and business models. The AOF standard on auditing that is being presented today aims to provide a comprehensive framework for an auditor. For performance on audit of the financial statements of an institution. Or entity that reports in line and compliant with Sharia principles and rules. It provides the principle based guidance with regards to responsibilities of the auditor. With regard to an audit, including those related to quality management, communication, planning and execution of audit. And then concluding on the evidence gathered as well as reporting in the form of providing a primary and supplementary opinion. It's the, it is one of this, it is the first standard that we are putting together as part of revised strategy. And the revision exercise that we have incorporating the development that we have in the global bank, global industry. Now for this public heading today, of course, please note that this session is being recorded. And it is being aired live on YouTube as well for your reference electron. This is based on the request that we have received earlier, the sessions were not available on YouTube. But from this month onwards, all the sessions, all the public hearings that AOF organized. Will be recall, will be aired live on YouTube and will be available on AOF YouTube channel. So if you have not subscribed to the AOF YouTube channel, please do so and hit the notification button. It will continue to remind you as and when a new public hearing or a video is uploaded on the channel. Today we have about my, you know, the registration was for more than 300 people from across the globe. And in particular, the session is being organized with the help of the Participation Banks Association of Turkey. And we have the focus in general now for our public hearing is to have sessions, regional sessions focused. Of course, they are open to the global audience, given that either virtual sessions. However, with the help of regional players and banking association, the idea is to reach out to more and more relevant stakeholders. If you have not read the standard already, my colleague shall place the link in the chat window shortly. We would like to ensure that this session is interactive. Please use the Q and A tab to ask questions and not the chat window. Should you wish to ask questions by voice, please raise your hand and we will allow asking of questions by voice if time permits. With regards to the standard itself and the presentation, there is no separate presentation that is made on the standard. The PDF document, i.e. the exposure draft is available and will be shared if you do not have an access already. Should you wish to send in your comments after the session, then please send us any comments or questions on governance@AOF.com. For other general queries related to AOF or working with AOF in, 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 in its niche through its initiatives or in other ways. Please reach out to info@AOF.com or you can reach out to me at rmalik@AOF.com. Should you wish to receive a certain period of attendance, please send us an email on ph@AOF.com. As I said, there are no separate slides available for this session. The session, the slides are exactly same as the exposure draft document that has been shared already. And will be shared again in the slides. Now, before any further ado, the standard will is, will be presented by the secretary general of AOF, Mr. Umar Mustafa Ansari. I have the pleasure of handing over to him to take us through the standard perhaps insha'Allah.
Thank you very much brother Dr. Rizwan Malik. Assalamu alaikum, rahmatullahi wa barakatuh everybody. Rabbi Shrahli Sadri, veyes siliyamri, wahlul abdatam ilisani, yafqabu qali. Today, we are probably going to have the second meeting of the, second public hearing of the series of public hearings on this standard. And obviously maybe there might be more events on that including round tables. And as, as this is a part of a comprehensive project involving other standards and guidelines also. So maybe, maybe there will be some time towards its finalization. However, the standard itself is very important because it provides more or less the complete framework. Of auditing for the Islamic financial institutions. For the benefit of participants, I think before I take you through the standard, it might be important if I, if I just discuss. Some, some aspects of the comprehensive project that I have been talking about. This comprehensive project on revision of AOF accounting auditing standards. Commenced several years back with the new strategy on auditing standards. AOF in past had issued five auditing standards from standard number one to five. And the sixth standard was issued as external Sharia audit standard, which is an independent assurance, assurance exercise. So that was also considered to be part of the series of auditing standards and auditing assurance standards that AOF issues. So now what we are considering is the revision, number one, review and revision. Of the first five standards that have been issued by AOF standard number one till five. These standards provide. Guidance with regard to the auditing of Islamic financial institutions with regard to the objectives afforded. Certain specific aspects afforded and certain, certain specific requirements that apply. The most important aspect these standards are covering is the difference. Of the Islamic finance from the conventional finance, that difference comprised of two aspects. One is that there are Sharia compliance requirements that are there, which are related to the institutions and transactions. And secondly, there are. Unique business models of Islamic finance, which are not exactly the same the way conventional finance works. So considering these things normally, the same two things, if you see the Sharia compliance of transactions and structures. As well as the unique business model of Islamic financial institutions and transactions. These are the things that actually result in development of accounting standards as well. AOF's accounting standards, a new strategy that was, that started in 2015. Resulted in lot of revision of the earlier standards whereby we started reconciling, aligning. As far as possible with IFRS and other international standards on accounting. Considering only two aspects where we keep the difference from the conventional. And those differences, as I mentioned, first relate to the Sharia principles and rules compliance in transactions and structures. And second relates the unique business model and transaction structures from the business and the transaction execution perspective that we have. So for example, I'm just, I just want to put an example here that for example, a muraba has some. Sharia conditions that first you need to purchase the goods and then you need to sell the goods. And that has a unique business model that this is different from the conventional financing transactions. Because here the subject matter is not the money, rather it's the subject matter is the goods. So eventually the accounting that is needed becomes different. For example, about institution, when we talk about Islamic financial institutions like Islamic banks. Have a unique model whereby they have a large number of investment accounts that are profit and loss sharing. A participatory nature accounts, which means that they share the risk of loss and they share the profits. With regard to the underlying assets, which means that the structure become different. Same applies to takaful whereby the structure of the institution is completely different from the structure of a. Insure, insurance company, conventional insurance company. So considering these aspects, we need separate accounting for Islamic finance and a similar manner. And some, at least to some extent, specific consideration regarding auditing are also needed. AOF, as the name suggests itself, accounting and auditing organization for Islamic financial institutions. Started its work initially with accounting and auditing standards. And after issuing five auditing standards, it was decided that most of the auditing aspects. Do not need specific standards. And from that perspective, the work on the auditing standard was slowed down till the time we issued the Sharia audit standard on, that is standard number six. However, there, there have been more considerations on the accounting side. So the work on accounting side has been in continuation and particularly for last several years after the new strategy. Has been more focused towards, towards these two aspects and towards aligning with IFRS. The same approach we want to follow now in the new auditing standard, standard strategy. Whereby we want to keep the distinction of Islamic financial institutions. We want to keep the objectives afforded as aligned with Islamic financial institutions. And objectives and nature of transactions. And at the same time, we do not want to reproduce what is already, already there in the conventional auditing standards. And we do not want to what you say that we do not want to reinvent the wheel. By going through each and every standard and doing everything in detail. Rather, our approach in this standard and the upcoming standards and guidelines will be with regard to keeping the differences. Focused with regard to the Islamic financial institutions and similar institutions which are within the mandate of AOF. Including Islamic financial institutions, Islamic social finance institution and Islamic finance transactions. Even if they are not done by Islamic financial institutions, for example, the instruments like Supu. Now, what we are expecting from this project of revision, the first standard is already in front of you. Most of you, I believe that might have already have a look at the exposure draft itself. This is about the objective and framework of auditing and it provides the overall core principles with regard to the audit. The most important differences as I identified already have been incorporated in the, in this framework in a way. That the conventional requirements of true and fair view of the financial statements are coupled with. The, the, the additional requirements with regard to the Sharia compliance, Sharia compliance of the entity and the transactions being reported. From that perspective, we actually, we actually are expecting that this standard provides the overall basis. Hence, we will not be reproducing almost, I won't say any, but. Probably most or maybe like, you know, we will not be reproducing any of the other standards coming from the conventional side. Because the overall framework and the key differences which are there are already identified in this one. However, we still need some additional guidance for the auditors of Islamic financial institutions. So the second most important output of this standard, this project will be a revised standard number four. So this standard will be replacing standard number one, two, three and five. So this might be a bit more detailed, but it will be replacing four of the existing standards. Standard number four, which is on specific considerations of the auditor with related, in relation to the Sharia compliance of the entity. That standard is also being revised now. And that will be, probably both of these standards will be having the same effective date. Considering the need for that standard, I would, I would just like to say that while this standard is identifying the core principles. That standard will be providing a little bit more practical guidance with regard to how. And to what extent Islamic finance institution auditors have to address the issue of Sharia compliance. And how they are going to, to, to place reliance, again, some of the placement of reliance. Related minimum requirements are here, but how they will collaborate with other organs of Sharia governance. And how they will place reliance on the work done by the other organs of Sharia governance. And if other organs of Sharia governance do not exist or their work is not reliable to that extent. To what extent these auditors will be, or the financial auditors will be required to perform their own responsibility with regard to Sharia compliance. Principle, Sharia principles and rules compliance. Just with regard to, with regard to this product, product, these two products being, being like, being the standard and the guidance on an overall basis. That might be just enough from the perspective of auditing, auditing standards. However, when you go to the field, you have lot of practical challenges. Some of those practical challenges are for the auditors, auditors of Islamic financial institutions. And particularly to the team with regard to addressing the issues related to Sharia non-compliance risk. And with regard to addressing the, 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 a general audit and financial reporting related audit requirements. Considering the specific structure of those transactions and structures. From that perspective, we believe that it is also important that similar to IFR, to I double ASB. As they have issued some guidance on likes, for example, audit of financial instruments. Or, or audit of derivatives, etc. Similarly, we have, we have considered and we are planning that we come up with some additional guidelines. With regard to audit of Islamic financial instruments, providing guidance to the audit teams as to how. They need to actually work on the Islamic finance audits. This is, this will try, this will, we hope that this will have an, have an effect on the overall level of what, what I, how I would put it. That overall level of like, you know, market, market sentiments. We have seen based on lot of discussions that Islamic financial institutions, the stakeholders, the Sharia scholars. They always feel challenged that the auditors who are coming to audit the Islamic financial institutions may not have. may not have enough understanding of these products and services. While we encourage that the audit teams of Islamic financial institutions should always have subject matter experts and the relevant expertise should be there, which is a requirement of this standard as well. But we believe that providing guidelines will at least bridge that gap, which is very significant as of now. With that, I would like to take you through the standard. Uh it's a long standard and we have limited time. So the first thing is that I would like to request all of you to keep your uh questions focused towards the standard itself. Uh we will try to, we'll try to allow some of the participants to speak as well. We'll see if the time permits that uh with regard to the comments that they may have. So it will be our effort, but it will depend on the uh time availability. From the perspective of uh, from the perspective of this standard, uh the last public hearing, I believe we had more focus on the conceptual part. Uh I'm not saying that uh that uh uh says some of the, some of the participants today might be reattending the event also, but uh but, but for just from our own perspective of taking comments. Today, I believe my more focus will be towards the later part of the standard uh which uh the, and, and less on the conceptual part, but for sure, any comments that are needed, we will try to obtain those comments. Uh we, we had a poll last time, I think, and uh those, those things we might not be repeating today. Uh rather, we'll be focusing more on some of the practical requirements that are con- contained in, in that standard. So from uh from uh, okay, I can see uh some question in the Q and A tab. Okay, we have a question from Brothers Yachtar. Assalamualaikum Brothers Yachtar, welcome. Uh Assalamualaikum, after going through the framework, one major point that I would like to mention that it seems the framework has discussed external auditing in detail, whereas I feel internal audit should be given more detailed consideration as they differ in many ways like planning, reporting, interaction uh with Sharia board, et cetera. Uh Brother Zia, I think it's a, it's a, it's a bit, bit of misunderstanding at your end. Uh it, uh let me, let me clarify, A U F I has a very specific standard available on internal Sharia audit. And the, in the, and, and the internal Sharia audit considerations are uh very well detailed in, in, in our original Sharia audit standard. Uh actually, we are working on more detailed guidelines on the internal Sharia audit as well. Uh and the minimum requirements are being included in A U F I, I F S Bs combined, uh joint, joint Sharia, uh joint Sharia governance standard as well. So from the perspective of A U F I's standards on internal Sharia audit, we have enough coverage and some of the things are already in place. However, with regard to this standard, the main focus is on the external audit and the considerations of the external auditor with regard to Sharia compliance with Sharia principles and rules. Sister Alia or Sister Tamara, can I request you to kindly provide a link to the internal Sharia audit governance standard? In the chat box.
Brother Umar.
Yes, please.
Assalamualaikum, brother.
Waalaikumsalam, brother.
If you allow me, can I?
Sure, 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 sir. Sure, sir, sure.
Just to clarify that the external audit is conducted under the international standards on auditing uh framework as opposed to internal audit is conducted in a different framework. So there are two different framework. The standards issued by the internal, international uh body on the internal audit are completely different. That's called uh international sta- uh intern- internal audit uh standard committee. And, and where what Brother Umar is trying to explain here is about addressing the issues coming out from ISAs, not from I I A standards. So basically, that's the fundamental difference here. Uh once this ISA exercise is done, there might be certain aspect the A U F I might cover at later stage to address the issues that are coming out from I I A. Uh the primary objective for this point in time is to address the auditing challenges that the practitioners are facing, resulting from differences in the ISA.
Thank you very much, Brother Rashad, for your clarification. I think it's uh well, well explained. And I believe that it would be clear for our colleagues now. I think uh, okay, uh so with that, I think we should, we should, we should move towards the standard itself. Let me share the presentation. I hope you can see the presentation now. Some of the basic, basics with regard to the, uh to the uh with regard to the preface and introduction part I have already explained. So I will not be going in that detail except for uh one aspect. That is uh, that is about about the, the significant changes from the previous standards. Uh Sister Alia, please note, it should be significant changes from previous standards because there are multiple standards. Okay, so this standard brings significant changes from its predecessor, predecessor standards interalien in the following aspects. A, the standard combines the requirement of multiple earlier standards, including a standard number one, stand uh objective and principles of auditing, objective standard number two, auditor's report. Standard number three, terms of audit engagement, and standard number five, auditor's responsibility to consider fraud and error in audit of financial statements at one place. So it removes redundancies and it ensures that maximum of the uh it ensures that maximum of the functions are uh like, you know, covered at one place. And obviously, uh international standards on or uh auditing have gone a long way in between since our last standards were issued nearly twenty years back. So we have tried to cover most of the additional aspects of the new auditing standards. Just for example, the key audit matters, which were not in, were not a concept even at that point of time. So there are lot of improvements in the international standards on auditing in between, which we have tried to incorporate in this one as well. A U F I framework for auditing has been defined, including aspects of its compliance. And it includes A U F I's standards as well as the international standards on auditing. Opinion of the auditor has been bifurcated for better clarity of scope, methodology and approach, as well as reporting requirement in form of a primary opinion on truth and fairness of the financial statement and a supplementary opinion on compliance with Sharia principles and rules. So it has been divided in two parts. Uh earlier, it was in a single opinion paragraph, opinion on two matters, that is comply, that is uh true and fair view on of the financial statements as well as compliance with Sharia principles and rules. So we have clarified it in, in very, uh in a bifurcated manner with primary and supplementary scope. Quality management requirements at firm level and engagement level have been inserted. Uh in, in, in uh definitions and significant principles have been aligned with, with, with current established practices of auditing, including coverage of certain aspects which were not covered in the predecessor standards, including aspects related to reporting, communication, related party uh compliance with laws and regulation, key audit matters, et cetera. And process flows and key principles of auditing related to various execution phases of an audit have been included, such as audit sampling, testing of control and testing of details have been made part of this standard. Sister Alia, just make a note in D, I think it should be included, not inserted, okay?
Insha Allah.
Now coming to the objective of the standard, the objective of the standard is to provide a comprehensive framework for an auditor to perform of a, perform an audit. For performance of an audit of the financial statements of an institution or entity that reports in line and complies with uh Sharia principles and rules. So primarily, we are talking about any entity that come, reports in line with and complies with Sharia principles and rules. So we are mainly talking about Islamic financial institutions, but uh, but A U F I has kept it, this option open that even considering ideal Islamic economic system where every entity should be, I, should be reporting and complying with the Sharia principles and rules. And there are uh entities around the globe now, more and more entities who are actually uh who are actually going towards compliance and some of the uh some of the uh countries have some regulations with regard to the Sharia compliance entities as well. So from that perspective, this option uh is expanded. So we simply don't say that it is for the performance of an audit of Islamic financial institution, rather we have or performance of an audit of financial statements of an institution or entity that reports in line and complies with Sharia principles and rules. It may include like Sukuk virtual entity, it may include WAHF institutions. It may include any other entity that is actually functioning and complying with uh Sharia principles and rules. This standard shall apply to an auditor in respect of an audit of financial statements of an institution or entity that reports in line with and comply with the complies with the Sharia principles and rules. A U F I standards on auditing are meant for providing a framework for audit, of auditing for the audit of Islamic financial institutions. However, these may also be applied for the purpose of audit of financial statements of the institutions and entities, including virtual entities other than I F Is, including in particular the social finance institutions and institutions involving Islamic finance structures and transactions. Let me clarify, uh it just even uh clarify one thing here. Uh that is, that is A U F I in past several years, even on the accounting side, has expanded its scope. So earlier, it was considered that A U F I's scope is Islamic financial institutions only. Now we say that our, our scope includes Islamic financial institutions and transactions and structures as well as a social finance institutions and other Sharia compliant entities. So from that perspective, we, we actually identify some of the aspects uh in this standard uh and as well as e- even the accounting side, we are covering some of the uh some of the new type of institutions and structures which were not covered early in the earlier A U F I standards. Uh one thing, I think there is one thing important on which we would like to have the views of the participants as well today. Uh uh our name of the standard series was earlier called A S I F I, auditing standards for Islamic financial institutions. However, uh in, in recent past, A U F I changed on the government side, the name of the governance standards. They were earlier called G S I F I, that is governance standards for Islamic financial institutions. But we changed them to G S now, A U F I G S, A U F I governance standards. Reason being that we have covered, for example, institutions like WAHF, which are not technically a financial Islamic financial institution, although they have the financial elements. Similarly, we have covered uh, covered uh uh like sort of uh instruments like crowdfunding and Sukuk. Uh it so, so the, the point is that the, the scope has been expanded to the structures and transactions as well, as well as the social finance and other Sharia compliant institutions. There can be virtual Sukuk entities, there can be virtual uh virtual uh WAHF entities, et cetera as well. Uh I do not want to go in that detail, but from that perspective, we decided that the name A S I F I, auditing stack and plan, standard for Islamic financial institution does not suit anymore. So A U F I uh uh is considering to change that name of the series of auditing standards to standards on auditing, SOAs. Uh this is just to distinguish slightly from the financial accounting standards because accounting standards and auditing standards both would be A S. So the series uh might have some confusions. So we just, on the financial accounting side, we call them financial accounting standards, that is F A S. And we considered that it might be a good idea to name them as uh standards on auditing. This is again, one of the areas where we would like to have public comments to get uh, get uh suggestions. Whether you feel that uh this new series, new name uh in, in nomenclature for the series of auditing standard seems appropriate and reflects the nature. There was one of the comments that these should be called standards on assurance. Audit or standards on auditing and assurance. Because Sharia audit is an assurance exercise, not a normal audit exercise, and that is also part of the series. And similarly, there was a suggestion that A U F I might need to come up with a standard on review engagements, that is review of Islamic financial institutions that also need to be covered. So considering these aspects, there were, there were several comments on this part. Uh 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 Brother Rizwan, can you just put a small poll on that uh with regard to the possible names? First, uh is the, uh can, can you just make a poll, uh just make a note of it? First would be, the first option is the current name, that is A S I F I, auditing standard for Islamic financial institution. The second option is auditing standards, A U F I auditing standards. So that will be A A S or A S only. The third option is standards on auditing, SOAs. And the fourth option is standard on auditing and assurance, S O A A. Brother Rizwan? Sister Alia, have you taken?
Yeah, I love it.
Yeah, so it will be good if you can run a poll now uh for, to take the views of the participants today. Uh that uh that what, what, what would be there appropriate, like, you know, how they feel that, what name reflects the nature of the series of standards more appropriately. For now, it is suggested to be standards on auditing. Uh however, these were the possible uh options that we have. I can see a question in the Q and A tab.
Yes, sir, please, just a comment.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you, Dr. Zajani, for being with us here. Thank you very much. Assalamualaikum.
Brother Umar, I suggest we should go with international standards on auditing like ISA for financial institutions. So just add financial institutions, so it will look like uh that we are also compliant with or are the alternative of ISAs.
Uh Brother, uh Brother Rizwan, please add the suggestion by Brother Rashad. Brother Rashad, we are just concerned that WAHF and, and, and Sukuk uh virtual entity and some other structure-based or audits and Sharia audits might not be covered in that. Uh I can see Dr. Umar Hafiz has raised his hand. First, I would like to, like, you know, request the team to kindly promote him to one of the panelists. Thank you very much, sir, for being here with us. Senior people like you, when you attend, it is very much encouraging for us. Uh so if I can request somebody to promote him.
Thank you very much, Brother Umar. This is very kind of you. Uh I am very happy to attend this uh uh session uh of public hearing. It's very essential for developing the standard. I, I just want to uh shed the, a light on the scope of the standard number two, which you are kindly discussing now.
Yes.
Uh applying, applying this standard on the on the accounting side and other sides of auditing may need some changes in the processing of, of the auditing. I don't know if you agree with me or not, because it says, may also be applied for the purpose. So I don't know if, is it uh right now to uh limit this standard to Sharia only?
Uh no, sir, no, sir. Uh if you see, uh the, I'll, I'll take you quickly to the next one. This is the scope of an audit. Uh uh sorry, uh this one. Uh if, if, if I allow you to quickly take you here, objective, uh let me take you to the objective of audit and objective of auditing that will clarify very clearly. Uh it's good because we are, we are just on the scope of the standard right now. But I will take you to the audit and the scope of audit and scope of uh aim of audit and the objective for auditor. This is para six. The aim of an audit of financial statements is to enhance the degree of confidence of intended users, including in particular the Sharia conscious stakeholders in the financial statements. This is achieved by, by the expression of opinion by the auditor as to whether or not and to, or to what extent the financial statements are prepared in all material respects in accordance with an applicable financial reporting framework. That is A U F I's financial accounting standards read with A U F I conceptual framework of financial reporting as well as an opinion on the state of compliance of the respective institution with the Sharia principles and rules. So this is the aim of the audit, that we need to have an opinion and enhance the level of confidence of the, of the stakeholders. Then we come to para seven, which is of objectives of the auditor. The overall objectives of the auditor are, A, to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements of the institution are as a whole free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error, thereby enabling the auditor to express an opinion on whether the financial statements are prepared in all material respects in accordance with an applicable financial reporting framework. That is A U F I financial accounting standards with A U F I framework, conceptual framework. B, to obtain reasonable assurance whether the institution has in all material respects complied with Sharia principles and rules with regard to the financial arrangements, contracts and transactions. Sister Alia, please note, no comma before end. Okay?
Insha Allah, Insha Allah.
Uh and during the period covered by the financial And during the period covered by the financial statement subject to audit. And to report on the financial statements and communicate as required by AOF SOAs in accordance with the auditor's findings. So sir, if you just, if you allow me to explain one more thing about concept of the Sharia conscious stakeholder. When we developed our accounting, financial accounting standards and we were considering. Like you know, reconsidering again, AOF started the work and at that time, the initial years, you were part of it. And thanks for the great contribution that you did, you and your two other colleagues did at that point of time. But we, I'm just talking about how we try to understand and how we try to represent it. We said our financial statements might be different from the financial statements of the conventional. Because of primarily the information, the transaction structures etcetera. But the, one of the most important part, financial statements are prepared for the information of the users. So how to address the information needs of the users is the most important challenge for the financial statements. And the objective of preparation of financial statements has to be addressing those aspects. From that perspective, we considered that Sharia conscious stakeholders and Sharia conscious users of financial statements. Are the ones from whose perspective we need to consider lot of changes in the information needs. So for example, a Sharia conscious stakeholder might not only be willing to know about what is, what is the situation about. The financial affairs, what is the state of financial affairs? Yes, that is important. We are in business. So for the business perspective, this is very important to know. But at the same time, there are additional aspects for Sharia conscious stakeholders, which are compliance of the entity with Sharia principles and rules. And here we actually believe that this is very important to understand. That, that the financial statements of an Islamic financial institution or another entity that complies with Sharia principle and rule. Has to comply with the Sharia principles and rules on an overall basis. Because for example, I invested in an entity. They earned a profit, but at the end of the year, I came to know that this was all haram profit. What happens to my money? What happens to my profit? As a Sharia conscious stakeholder, as a user, as an investor, I cannot use that money for my benefit. Another example, in Islamic financial institution, there were profits. But the Sharia board identifies that these are not, not compliant with Sharia. So these are paid into charity. So considering that the, the objective of Islamic financial institution includes compliance with Sharia principles and rules. And there can be other entities like this as well, for example WAHF. So from that perspective, the user must know and must have the financial information about, about the, the institutions of pairs. But additionally need to know about the qualitative aspects of financial, of, of the entity that is with regard to Sharia compliance in particular. Now, obviously, there are minor matters as well. I don't want to go in detail. There are unique information structures, unique business structures. So the information needs of an investment account holder in Islamic bank who has invested based on Mudarba or Wakala. Is different from the information need of a conventional institution depositor who is concerned only about the creditworthiness of the bank. That okay, if the bank is willing to pay back my money with interest, I am not concerned about how they use my money. So I'm, I'm least concerned about detailed disclosures. But in respect of an Islamic financial institution, the information needs increase in that situation. So considering those aspects, that paragraphs of, or standards scope and the standard objective should be read with this, these two paragraphs of. Overall aim of an audit and the objective of the auditor to understand the whole concept. And this whole standard is about addressing these things, sir. So if we, if we leave the things completely on if I, on international auditing standards and as an auditing. What happens that there is only, only the report on the financial matter. Still they need to consider, even if, even if some country does not adopt AOF's standards is on the auditing. Is still there are aspects that need to be considered by the auditor because. The objective of the entity is Sharia compliance. The contractual obligations towards stakeholders include Sharia compliance. The, the regulatory requirements may include Sharia compliance. The Sharia, the governance framework itself requires compliance with the requirements of the Sharia supervisory board etcetera. So considering all these factors, even a financial statement auditor, even if AOF's auditing standard is not adopted. So if we talk about any country like, for example, we talk about like, like any country that doesn't adopt like Malaysia. They don't adopt AOF or standards and they don't adopt AOF's auditing standard. But the question is, can an auditor of Islamic financial institution or a Sharia compliant entity. May completely ignore the aspects of compliance with Sharia principles and rules? I believe not. For example, IFR, international standards on auditing themselves have a standard on compliance with, with laws and regulations. And they say that compliance with laws and regulations is important to, like you know, from, from both perspectives. One is from the perspective of financial aspects that they, the non-compliances of those may result in, in, in financial aspects. And additionally, there can be disclosure and other information needs related to that. And there can be penalties and restrictions on the, on the business. So considering that, even, even in a country where AOF standards are not adopted. Is still the financial statements auditor cannot just say that, okay, I don't care about what is Sharia. They, he, they need to understand the business model. So the business model comes from Sharia. There are regulations related to Sharia. There is a governance model of the institution which requires the Sharia principles and rules will be followed, including the rulings of the Sharia board. There are contractual obligations with regard to the compliance with Sharia principles and rules with the stakeholders. The contracts of the transactions have themselves Sharia principles and rule built in in those contracts. So the contractual compliance has financial elements as well. So considering all these aspects, sir, you know, a financial statement auditor cannot say that I am not concerned about Sharia. AOF's old standards, which were again, the conceptually, they were very good. But the only thing we tried to, obviously, we learn with a period of time. So only what we are doing right now, that the opinion on the financial matters as well as the opinion on the general matter. On the Sharia compliance matters were contained in one single paragraph. And that was actually confusing the scope at several stages. So what we have done, that we have kept the primary scope as similar to international standards on auditing. And the secondary scope supplementary opinion with regard to Sharia principles and rules. So I think, sir, I have partially answered your question and have tried to explain some other aspects which are related to that. And obviously, the purpose of the remaining sections you will see is to incorporate in the whole process flow of audit. We have tried to incorporate whatever related to specific body of Islamic finance and related to Sharia compliance need to be inserted. I think, yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, thanks a lot, brother Umar. This is a clarification is very well, Masha Allah understood. Another small issue in the scope also, as we are still in the scope of the standard.
Sure, sir.
You are referring always to Sharia principles and rules. Which is very well understood now. In case, you know, auditors cannot perform their job except with, except to refer to some standards of Sharia.
Yes, sir.
Can we say, are you for Sharia standards, not general rules and the principles of Sharia?
Sir, it's an excellent, it's an excellent comment, sir. Thank you very much. An excellent comment. Sir, we have tried to address this one in our governance standard, so now we are inserting it in the auditing standard as well. Our earlier auditing standard referred to Sharia principles and rules established by the Sharia, by the Sharia board of the institution. But now our governance standards and even the accounting standards have a clear definition of Sharia principles and rules. So let me read this one from five FF. Sharia principles and rules comprise that, now, now this is a defined term. So wherever we use the Sharia principles and rules, it means whatever is defined here. So Sharia principles and rules comprise, comprise the Sharia principles and rules defined by the following hierarchy as appropriate. One, the Sharia standards issued by AOF. Two, the regulations issued by respective jurisdictions regulator insofar as these entail the regulatory Sharia requirements. Three, the rulings of the central Sharia board of the respective jurisdiction, if there is one. Four, the requirements of the applicable financial accounting standards as issued by AOF insofar as these entail Sharia related requirements. And five, the approvals and rulings given by the Sharia supervisory board of the institution. Explanation. Now, first thing is, it is a hierarchy, which means that first you need to comply with the AOF Sharia standards. If they are silent, you can refer to the country Sharia regulations. If they are silent, you can refer to the central Sharia board rulings. If, and then you refer to the financial accounting standards, which, which have some of the Sharia considerations like timing of recognition of revenue. And risk and reward related considerations. And then the last one is the approvals and rulings given by the Sharia supervisory board. So this is the hierarchy. You go in this hierarchy. Then we have an explanation that in case of an ambiguity identified during a compliance audit or rating exercise as the case may be. With regard to interpretations related to the WAHF, the Sharia supervisory board's clarification shall prevail. So this is to avoid that, like for example, interpretation of, of Sharia standards. So there is, there is a risk that if we don't put this explanation, which is already there in some of the AOF governance standards, like external Sharia audit standard and others. I think in the rating standard, it is also there. The, the risk is that, and people actually ask this, oh, you are asking auditors to give opinion on Sharia? No, we are not asking them to give just general opinion on Sharia compliance. As you mentioned, sir, that there must be a reference to standards. So we have made a reference to standards, but at times Sharia standards of AOF might not be sufficient. There can be new products or the interpretation or detailed guidance cannot be there. So we have put all the five requirements there in the respective hierarchy. But if the auditor take a view, oh, in my view, it is a non-compliance of Sharia, Sharia. Then his interpretation will not prevail over the institution's Sharia board's interpretation. Reason being that the regulatory frameworks and the governance frameworks have not given the right to the auditor to interpret Sharia. They have given the right to the Sharia supervisory board to interpret Sharia. So sir, it's from that perspective, wherever we have used the term Sharia principles and rules in this standard. Or now in any of the governance standards or accounting standards. That create a reference to this very specific definition of Sharia principles and rules, which is applied in this given hierarchy.
Yeah, brother Umar, I just would like to show the importance of this standard to all fellows. You, Alhamdulillah, certified to do Sharia auditing. And they are in hundreds, Masha Allah.
Yes.
This will draw a very good line for all of them to do their job, Insha Allah, in the future. Thank you very much for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, for very good comments. We have some comments in the Q and A tab and I think some people have actually raised their hands as well. So, Dr. Umar, sir, if you can just, you can just remove your hand, please, sir, Dr. Umar, sir. And now we have, okay, let me first take the comments from the Q and A tab. Okay, brother Yasser Varghati has a comment. I think he wanted to speak as well. In the benefit of time, let's first take your comment and if in the later stage you want to talk also, then we can allow you to speak. Brother, looking at the overall audit objective, does it imply that external auditor being a SIPA or holding any Islamic qualification? It's a very good point, Dr. Brother Yasser. We have set the quality assurance requirements and, and the client acceptance requirements. Have to make sure that you have the right capability. If, if I put, you know, as AOF, we have to be very impartial and as a standard setting body, we have to be impartial and avoiding conflict of interest. So if we put having SIPA as a condition, you will say, oh, Mr. Umar, you are putting in your own standard to have SIPA. So that you can make money by, by having more candidates for SIPA. So we do not put, we believe that AOF need to not only develop standards, but also to help develop the market. And for the, that purpose, helping developing the market, we need to provide implementation support and capital and capacity building support. So we are doing those activities of capacity building and implementation support in, in various areas. However, we believe that putting SIPA itself as a qualification, like you know, required for this purpose. Would be a conflict of interest. So we don't put SIPA as a requirement. But what we have put in, in the quality assurance requirement and in the, in the acceptance requirements for audit, audit. That the auditor must ensure that they have the right, right blend of team available and the subject matter expert available. So this is something that we have covered not by mentioning, the, 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 mentioning the qualify, name of the qualification. But by mentioning that you need to have the right blend of people, including subject matter experts. Thank you very much, brother Yasser. I believe your answer, your question is addressed. So at a later stage, if you have another question, we can allow you to have a question in, by, 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 by audio. Then we have brother Mohammed Jiddat Tom, Assalamualaikum. After going through the framework, one major point that I observed is also the reporting line and more consideration to ISA is supposed to give more details. Which is the main engine in the bank in terms of given products or other activities of the bank to be Sharia compliant or not. I think, sir, I fully agree with you at that internal compliance, that, 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 that the assessment of the work of internal Sharia audit. And, and, and using the work of internal Sharia audit is very important. That's why we have covered it in this, this standard. And more details will be there in the standard number four, Insha Allah. Thank you very much for a very good comment, sir. We have a comment from brother Mohammed Amir, Amir Mohammed. Is there a possibility to provide illustrations or example in qualitative or quantitative terms? So explain what could not be covered if conventional auditing standards are used and AOF standards can cover it from materiality and Sharia point of view? Same approach, approach may be used for, for FAS. Brother Amir, this, in this project, obviously, there will be more illustrations and examples available when we go for the detailed guidelines, as I mentioned. So there will be standard number four, revised standard number four, and there will be some other comments, some other guidelines also with regard to the specific, like you know, use of, use of. Specifically on the audit of different aspects of the financial statements. So at that point of time, I think your comment will be more useful. This standard is already quite detailed and it's a principle based standard. We do not want to make it a 500 page standard. But your comment is very well taken. Thank you very much for a good comment. I think the right place for your comment would be when we go for standard number four and when we go for the detailed guidelines with regard to audit of financial statements. So thank you very much, sir. Okay, so I think we have answered the questions. Let's move ahead. So. Okay, so the scope is covered, then out of scope, what is out of scope? A standard or structure offered by a conventional financial institution referred to in clause this, 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 this. Of financial reporting for Islamic finance windows. Okay. Why we are putting it excluded? First thing is, what is, what is, because it is not written here, those of you who are aware of the financial accounting standard number forty might be, might be knowing it. Sister, sister Alia, can make, can you make a note of it, please? FAS, the bracket should be before forty, okay? Yeah, the bracket close, it should be FAS should be in bracket, not forty, okay? Now, this paragraph talks about conventional financial institutions offering Islamic finance services without properly having Islamic finance window. This is something which is sort of, how I would put it, I would like to put like, you know. This is something that AOF has taken stance in more recent years when the accounting, on the accounting side. As well as in the exposure draft for the joint Sharia governance framework with IFSB. That, that, that just offering Islamic finance products without actually having a Islamic finance window should not be encouraged. Now Islamic finance window that standard mentions that it can be a licensed window or a virtual window. License window obviously has to be according to the regulations whereby assets and liabilities and things are segregated. Even the governance and functioning are segregated as per the respective regulations. However, even if it is not a licensed window, like it is operating in a country where there are no proper licensing, licensing mechanism for Islamic. However, even if it is not a licensed window, like it is operating in a country where there are no proper licensing licensing mechanism for Islamic finance windows, still there should be a virtual window, which means that the the business of Islamic finance should be segregated from conventional, which means even the sources of funding should be segregated from the from the conventional. So if you have Islamic finance product offering, its assets and liabilities and quasi-equity etcetera are to be segregated. So we we want to clarify here that if you do not segregate, if you are a conventional institution and you are offering Islamic financial services, we do not consider it to be acceptable within Uffiy framework, unless you comply with segregation of of assets, liabilities, quasi-equity and other requirements of FAS forty as as a licensed and window or a virtual window. And in that situation, obviously, an audit will cover it. But if it is not segregated, then this standard will not cover it. Secondly, an institution engaged in general business operations not in compliance with an identified set of Sharia principles and rules as well as identified Sharia governance framework. So a general for a general entity, institution or entity without following identified Sharia principle framework will not be subject to that and it also partially addresses the comment by our respectable Dr. Omer Zohair Raffi. Para four says that Uffiy framework for auditing comprises of comprises all Uffiy SOAs read with related pronouncements and established practices of auditing insofar as the requirement of such established practices of auditing are consistent with SOAs and Sharia principles and rules. Let us go to the definition of established practices of auditing. Established practices of auditing comprise of the international standards on auditing ISAs issued by the International Auditing and Assurance Standards Board and/or the equivalent standards and regulatory requirements applicable in the respective jurisdiction. For example, we know that Turkey and some other countries and even Muslim countries have their own regulatory standards, which are aligned with ISAs or at times exactly the same as ISAs, but they have their own framework. They may have their additional requirements in addition to ISAs as well. So from that perspective, established practices of auditing comprise of these. So the framework of Uffiy auditing standards, auditing framework comprise of first, Uffiy SOAs and secondly, this. Brother Iswan, have you run the poll? Can we have? Can we have the poll? Can we request all of the all of the participants to please respond to the poll, please? Only thirty-four participants have responded as yet. So may I request all of you? We have one hundred and twelve participants that I can see. So can I request all of you to just quickly answer this question? Which name option do you feel is better? Standard on auditing, standard on auditing and assurance, SOA, SO double A, international standard on auditing for Islamic financial institutions, international financial financial standards on auditing, auditing standards for Islamic financial institutions, ISFI, which is the existing name, Uffiy auditing standards.
Brother, meanwhile, we can answer a question. They're asking about the comment period. How long is it?
Okay. How long is the comment period on this exposure draft? This is a question from Noor Nukatu. Welcome. And the quick answer is that right now this standard is open. Although we when we should normally, we give two to three months' time, but I can tell you there is a bit more time available for this one. Because we are, we we have to like, you know, work finalize this one and AS four, SOA four together. So this is something because both of them are interrelated. And some of the things we have to decide to what extent they are to be covered in this standard or not to be covered in the standard and covered only in the standard number four. So from that perspective, it reminds us that we need to speed up the process of standard number four. Maybe public hearings process we will complete shortly. But comments process may be open. So at least you have time. I can say that at least you have time till June, maybe till July at least. But it more than it may be more than that because we have to actually work on the work on the other standard exposure draft, which needs to be issued shortly, Insha Allah. Thank you very much. We have a comment from Analisa Atenza. Additional suggestion or name international Islamic financial standards on auditing? I think this one international international Islamic financial standards on auditing. Okay. I think I think that this this name is a good is also good. I think this is similar to a suggestion that was there international financial standard or auditing. Okay, thank you very much for this suggestion. Well noted. I don't know whether it will be easy for us to redo the poll again. Now seventy participants have responded out of one ten, others maybe are indifferent. So let me see quickly what the result is. There are some more results are coming. Let me come, let me summarize, but brother Iswan, don't close the poll, keep it open. But let me summarize the results as of now. As of now, twenty-two percent have said that standard on auditing, that is the name that we suggested is okay. Twenty-three percent say that international standard on auditing for Islamic financial institution as suggested by Dr. Brother Ishad. I'm just concerned that we want it to be beyond only Islamic financial institution because social financial institutes, social finance institutions and other Sharia compliant entities and the virtual entities like Sukuk entities are not covered in this in this name. But we can see that this name is also like, you know, people are positive about it. Auditing standards for Islamic financial institutions. But this is, this is again similar to, this is exactly the current name of the standards. The maximum number is twenty-seven percent on that. Uffiy auditing standards, twenty-two percent. So standard on auditing and Uffiy auditing standards combined is nearly forty-four percent. And international standard on auditing for Islamic financial institution and auditing standard for Islamic financial institution, they are nearly fifty percent. We keep this open for the participants who join later and other participants who have not yet responded, we can take their comment as well. We will take this these comments going forward, Insha Allah. I'm just concerned about one thing that one suggestion of keeping the existing name and the suggestion by Dr. Brother Ishad might not cover the 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 Sukuk, the Sukuk entities, the crowdfunding or other type of like instruments that are there, any type of social finance institutions like zakaah institutions and 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 work institutions. So this is an aspect that we need to keep in mind. Thank you very much, everybody, for this these comments. These are very well well taken. Let me move ahead and we keep the poll open. But brother Iswan, if you can just make sure that we get the poll results towards the end. Thank you very much. So I will not go by definition by definition in detail. But maybe maybe a time of five hours might not be enough for this standard, then we have only two hours. So out of which more than one hour is already passed. So I have to be very quick now. And mostly I will be asking for the comments on different areas. So first thing is, if anybody has any comments on the definitions, we have definition of the applicable of financial reporting framework, which obviously primarily has to be Uffiy framework. But we do not make it a condition that it has to be always based on that. It is preferred one, but it can be based on other other frameworks also. Subject to Sharia compliance, obviously, because Sharia compliance is the other condition. So even if it is IFRS or others, it has to be established that it is Sharia compliant. Or there is definition of auditor. There is a definition of audit documentation, audit evidence, audit risk. Audit risk includes the Sharia aspect. So this in this way, it is different from the ISA definition of audit risk, audit sampling, direct external Sharia audit and we have a direct external Sharia audit definition coming from SOA six. Emphasis of a matter paragraph, we have a definition and we mentioned that compliance with Sharia principles and rules may also have emphasis of matter paragraph. Definition of error, established practices of auditing, I have discussed because it was important to understand the scope. External Sharia audit coming from the standard on external Sharia audit. External Sharia auditor again coming the definition from the external Sharia auditor standard. I think it's the reference, footnote reference is missing here. Sister Alia, can you just make a note of it? Because in the first in the external Sharia audit definition, the footnote reference is coming, but on the auditor definition, footnote reference is missing. Okay, fraud. Fraud, again, we are different from IFRS from the ISAs in respect of the non-compliance with Sharia principles and rules can also be a fraud element. Institution definition, which includes IFI or any other institution or entity whose whose financial statements are subject to audit under the Uffiy framework for auditing. And this is again, as I mentioned, that was my concern with regard to the name of the standard itself. Internal Sharia audit function. I think sister, I think this one also need a footnote reference to the original definition. Coming from the governance standard, internal Sharia auditors. So sister Ali and sister Marjan, if you can just make a note of it, that whatever definitions are coming from our earlier standards, they should be with a footnote and some other definitions we might need to refer to. We need to see if they are exactly as ISAs. Do we need to keep them or not?
Right.
Islamic financial institution definition is also coming from the accounting framework as well as the as well as the governance governance standards of Uffiy. Then key audit matters. This is similar to similar to the ISAs. Materiality, but materiality has to consider the qualitative elements as well, which include the Sharia compliance aspects. Modified opinion, other matters paragraph, performance materiality, pervasive, definition of pervasive. But actually, definition of pervasive, I think, is not there in the ISAs, if I'm not mistaken. This was developed by us considering the Sharia aspects also. Population and preconditions for an audit. Primary opinion, professional skepticism, again, professional skepticism has to consider the the Sharia non-compliance elements. Public interest entities is a definition that we have we have inserted. It is in line with some generally available globally available definitions, but it has been specifically coined for our standard. Risk assessment procedures, sampling unit, Sharia principles and rules is an important definition, but we have discussed it already. Sharia supervisory board as per Uffiy's existing standards. Sister Alia and Marjan, please note it, if it might need to be amended based on if we if we finalize the hopefully for sure, a revised Sharia governance framework will be finalized before the 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 before the auditing standards. So I think that this definition needs to be updated in line with that and footnote need to be provided. Substantive procedures, supplementary opinion, now let me clarify this one, it is important. It is an opinion being an integral part of the auditor's report duly formed and expressed by an auditor in addition to his primary opinion on the financial statements of an institution as to whether or not the institution has complied in all material respects with the Sharia principles and rules applicable to its financial arrangements, contracts and transactions during the period covered by the financial statements. So first thing is that this is now a more clear opinion, separate from the financial statement opinion. It is identified as the supplementary opinion. Again, maybe I have used some places the word inadvertently about secondary opinion. It is actually primary opinion and supplementary opinion. It's not secondary opinion, it is supplementary opinion. Obviously, there is a difference that we are not saying that it is it in in terms of significance, it is below the primary opinion. Rather, we are saying that it actually supplements the primary opinion. But it has to be kept separate so that all the related processes, requirements, etcetera are managed properly. It is important, it was important for us even to manage the whole process of auditing and process flow of the auditing in a proper way. Even as of now, we have observed that the industry has different mark practices with regard to this opinion part. Some of them, some of the auditors are putting it in the other other opinions or the opinion on other matters, which is not as correct as per Uffiy's correct or current standards. But in future, we are going to clarify it more clearly in line with this one. We have received two comments from Sheikh Hisham, Masal, Haisalamualaikum and welcome, brother. Salam, I think we should expand fraud definition to include the Sharia non-compliant findings from applications, transaction ethics and governance to cover all kinds of Sharia frauds. Thank you very much, Hisham. I think what we do, we take your comment positively, but I suggest that instead of incorporating it in the in the in the definition itself, because definition should be focused. So what we need to do, we can put it we can put it in explanation to the fraud definition, either within the definitions or in the body text as applicable. Sister Dalia, Marjan, kindly note, this is a this is a good comment and we need to take it to the working group and how we like, you know, expand on it or explain the 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 concept of fraud from the Sharia perspective.
Right.
We have comment from brother Mohammed Jiddat Tom that he he prefers IFI SOA, that Islamic financial institutions standards on auditing. Thank you very much for your kind comment, sir. It is noted. Your second comment is the issue of fit and proper, the issue of what a proper criteria in terms that we have a well-versed staff with Sharia or Islamic jurisprudence and fiqh ma'mlaat with few knowledge a few knowledge of audit with someone who is very good in audit and have very limited knowledge of Sharia and FCSA. While the first staff is not certified, which of of them can can be to choose for HISA. Sir, your question is is related to head of internal Sharia audit. And I think we are we are we are getting out of this out of this. Actually, for me, the qualification is not the only thing. You need to have you need to have the to assess the person also. But in my understanding, internal Sharia audit, don't say that, Omar, because you are from the auditing background. You are emphasizing on the audit side. For my, in my view, scholars' main area is to determine Sharia principles and rules and to get them implemented and performance, the performance of the audit of of those in Sharia principles and rules being implemented in the appropriate way in the business operations and reflected in the financial reporting is primarily the job of of accountants and auditors. So in my humble view, but for me, if you ask me, I would say not CSA, I would say SIPA. Reason being that our old CSA program, which is still continuing, which is just being like, you know, which has been revamped. We are just in the process of launching the new program. That is a very simplified qualification, a single paper qualification. While our SIPA is a proper four module program, new CSAU program, certified Sharia auditor program will also be a four module program. So I believe that these things will be, Insha Allah, we will be like sort of we'll be having better qualification and stronger qualification. So from my perspective, it is more about having a proper accounting and auditing background, including Sharia audit background for this position is more important. I'm sorry, we have gone on a side like on a side note. It was related to internal Sharia audit, but why I wanted to mention it? Because in my view, the same applies to external Sharia audit and the same applies to the to the to the experts, the subject matter experts who have to be part of the team for the financial statements audit. So the accounting and auditing expertise is very important and the business expertise is very important. Sharia expertise alone might not be sufficient, but for sure, we need to have an ideal where 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 the 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 proper knowledge of of these things is combined in some individual. That is the ideal situation that we find people who are good in both the knowledge of Dunya and knowledge of things related to Aakhirah. They they combine the knowledge and that is the ideal. But I answered, actually, I was initially thinking of dropping this question, but then I answered this one because it the question was related for internal Sharia audit. But for us, it is important to have the same concept in the financial audit. The same concept in the financial audit as well as the external Sharia audit, which are more related here. Thank you very much, sir. We have comment from Brother Sadak Khan, audit sampling. Can we define the minimum sizes of audit sampling for financing and deposit products that must be considered doing audit? Brother Sadak Khan, actually some of the regulators around the globe have this practice of putting some of the minimum requirements. Like in Pakistan, the central bank says that you need to verify at least sixty percent of the financing. There are some other regulators here who have put some of these sort of conditions. But sir, if we put it as a regulatory requirement, as a requirement from our end, we fail the concept of risk-based audit. So from, so while the regulator has the right to require for a, require for even a hundred percent audit. But it's a regulatory requirement, we cannot say that this is a risk-based audit requirement. So the proper risk-based audit requirement which has to happen according to a proper process. Has to go with a, with a method, methodology, methodology approach with regard to the. With regard to the materiality determination, risk assessment and applying the risk with materiality for finding the right. Sample sizes, et cetera, and even the approach that is applied towards selection of sample like, you know, to what extent it has to be a judgmental sample. And to what extent it has to be a representative random sample, et cetera. So all these things should be done in a more professional way. As Y O F I, I am not in favor of and auditing standards are always not in favor of putting. Additional requirements for this purpose, but there are regulators who have put this requirement and in that situation, we should leave this. Additional burden of verification on financing, et cetera, in the hand of the regulator. If they want to put additional requirement, they are, they, they feel free to do that. But from the auditing, it should be a proper risk-based, efficient and effective audit. Okay, so I think I need to move on. Test of control, okay, so there is a long list of definitions. And we will, will welcome any comments on the definitions, all aspects of the standard in writing as well, including any important definitions that you feel. Are missing, when one thing we decided that we did not reproduce most of the I S A definitions which were used in this standard. For the terms which were used in this standard, because we did not want to like reproduce and we, we try to maintain the copyright. You know, copyright rules to be followed as well. However, some of the very important definitions which are related to this standard have been included. Particularly where the amendment was needed to those definitions with regard to the additional scope of standards. Then we move to the next overall aim and objective, I think these are the, the very important sections that I have covered already. If we have any comment, we'll take the comment, otherwise I'll prefer to move on. We have a, a scope of an audit here. Then scope is explained here with regard to, on the Sharia side, on the Sharia side, we have one thing that is covered in the definition of the. In the opinion as well and here also, I think I need to clarify. The scope with regard to the compliance of an institution with the Sharia principles and rules shall be limited to the financial arrangements, contracts and transactions having Sharia implications. This is an important part because there can be additional aspects with regard to. Like with regard to some of the areas where we may not be able to assess the Sharia compliance. So the Sharia compliance part is considered primarily here for the financial arrangements, contracts and transactions having Sharia implications. Entered into by the institution with its customers, other financial institution and stakeholders, both in substance and their legal form. So we are not saying that only the documentation is enough, rather you need to see the transaction trail, the execution of the transaction and the process flow itself. You need to make sure that it was not only a mere bunch of papers, as I always say. That now Subhanallah, you cannot make fool of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala by just making a bunch of papers. So it is primarily very important that not only the documentation, but the execution of transaction and its transaction trail. Including the recording and reporting of financial, for financial transactions is all in line with Sharia principles and rules. I can see a question in the Q and A tab, brother Khalid and Nasr says that I have a couple of questions. Brother, you want to take the questions live, okay, okay, please. I, I think we can allow a few questions by, by, by audio as well. We know that time is limited, but please allow brother Khalid and Nasr, please, if you can raise your hand.
He's allowed.
Okay, he's, you are allowed, brother Khalid, please.
Did another hand raised by Dr. Muhammad Daraz? Oh, it's down now.
Okay, so brother Khalid, okay, brother Khalid has said that he will write, type them down, thank you very much. Because actually we wanted to allow some questions live, but the time is not sufficient, so thank you very much if you put them, put them in writing. It will be great. I think brother is one seeing the scene on the watch, I think we may not be able to allow more, more live questions except for the panelists themselves. We have come, comment from Analisa, can we request revisit of last sentence of paragraph thirty one? Perhaps it should include the word must be considered at the end of the statement. Paragraph thirty one, you are talking about. We are jumping a bit, but let me take you because this, okay, you are talking about the last sentence. Of the paragraph thirty one where it's, you say that. Must be considered, should include the words must be considered at the end of the statement. Okay, so we are saying that additionally in several areas, the quantitative as well as the significance. Sister Alia, sister Marjan, please note as well as the writing style consistency, okay, with commas. The, the significance, it, it is the consistency issue only. Or severity of an observation from the Sharia perspective or the significance of this for observation for specific side of stakeholders. Thank you very much, Sister Analisa, I think you have identified there is something missing and probably. We, we should say either shall be considered, not, we don't, we normally don't use must in places like this. The sentence seems incomplete, thank you very much for identification of that. Marjan and Alia, you might need to check for the original drafts, something is missing here. But if you are unable to find, then for sure, we take the comment from Sister Analisa Atenza. I think instead of must be considered, we should say. Shall be considered. Or the shall be considered will be coming or significance or severity of the observation shall be considered from Sharia perspective. Or the significance of observation is that, okay, no, no, it will be towards the end, it will be towards the end, thank you very much. But instead of must, because we normally avoid must in, 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 in the standards. Normally we use shall, must we use in a very rare circumstances where, where we want to emphasize significant use of something. So I think it will be a shell here, thank you very much for identifying that mistake type of error that needs to be corrected. Brother Khalid and Nasr has regarding item one oh seven, it is achieved when the external audit collaborates with the external Sharia auditor. One zero seven. Evidence of involvement of the subject matter experts in the team and the procedures and reviews performed by them as well as their views on the specific Sharia issues shall be documented. Appropriately, brother Khalid, I think this just collaboration with external Sharia auditor might not be sufficient. Now, there are two situations, one, there is the financial auditor is also the external Sharia auditor. This is allowed in some of the countries or required in some of the countries like as a common practice, like for example. In, in the countries where Sharia audit has started like Pakistan, Oman, Bahrain, you will find some of the external auditors to be the financial. Sharia auditors as well, external Sharia auditors as well. In that situation, they can say that we can have a combined team for this purpose and they can show. That these subject matter experts are also part of this team and their work can be used for this purpose. Obviously, both of the opinions are independent, so both opinions have to, the both documentation requirements have to be fulfilled. However, if the Sharia, actual Sharia auditor is another entity. So for example, I'm just putting an example, if the auditor is E Y. And external Sharia auditor is for example K P M G or is like Sharia Review Bureau or I F A S or Rakhbaat. These type of institutions, so what happens that it will become the, it will become the use of work of external Sharia auditor. You cannot say that Sharia expert is there, so actually the requirement of this standard is that you must have Sharia experts. Only thing is that if you are also the Sharia, external Sharia auditor, then you can use the same Sharia experts. To, to, for both of the purposes, that is quite possible. However, if you are not the same Sharia auditor and shape financial auditor are not the same entity, same audit firm. In that situation, you must have your own Sharia experts on the team, subject matter experts on the team. And, and still you can use the work of the external Sharia auditor, but that will be within the caption of using the work of external auditor, external Sharia auditors. Thank you very much, we have put a section on using the work of external Sharia auditor in this standard. But more details will be provided in standard number four, thank you very much for a very good comment. And I hope that this clarification suffices. Brother Sadak Khan has a comment, overall objective of the auditor besides financial arrangement, contracts and transactions, can we include I T systems? Brother Sadak, let me ask you a question, do you think I T system is the purpose or the means? For me, financial arrangements, contracts and transactions are properly Sharia compliant is the purpose. And I T systems is one of the means for that. Even financial reporting is one of the means for that, which is part of my primary opinion. And there are having controls and systems like having internal controls in process. That is also one of the important sort of, that is one, also one of the important, I would say. Means for that, so I T system in my humble opinion sir is the means for that. And the opinion including on I T system would be too much to ask. However, some of the regulators have asked that I T system Sharia compliant should also be checked. And we actually recommend that it should be done as Y O F I, we ourselves certify. One of the, one of the I T systems as core banking system. You all may be aware that I M O L is certified by Y O F I, it was certified even twelve, thirteen years back and for last four years, we have been certifying it every year. And there is another one in progress, some others have approached us as well. Oman has a requirement that there must be a certification for that, so the regulatory requirement is fulfilled by either following a, a, a system. Certified by Y O F I or the local firms actually certify the system. So I'm not undermining the need for certification of I T system to be compliant with Sharia principles and rules. But, but the point is that it is a means. So even when we give the opinion on, on that, we say that it is capable of ensuring compliance with Sharia principles and rules. If it is, or capable of implementation of the Y O F I Sharia standards and accounting standards. But putting it directly part of opinion in my humble opinion would not be appropriate, sir. However, with regard to I T systems, we will take your comment to the, to the committee and we'll see if we need to cover more on that. Obviously, we have covered the minimum part, maybe the standard number four will be having more requirements of that, thank you very much for your comments, sir. Noor Nakato has a comment, please consider including an illustrative auditor's opinion, sir, we have it, actually we have the whole section on the. On that reporting and there will be actually, I, I, so all the main requirements regarding opinion are already there in the. Reporting section of this standard and sorry, I forgot to mention that right now we have a guidance note number two on the. On the auditor, auditors report, already it is there, so we plan to have a new guidance note. Which will be having the new illustrative financial, report of, on the financial statement by the auditors. Including both the primary and the supplementary opinion, thank you very much for this comment. As a new policy of Y O F I, of Y O F I Professional Auditing Standards Committee and Governance Board. The report will be part of guidance note, report will not be part of the standard itself. Because in past, the report was part of the standard as illustration, it says that it is illustrative report. But there was an argument with regard to some of the new requirements coming from I S A side. So then we issued the guidance note number one and then number two and we mentioned that this, this, this guidance. This is the new illustrative report, so if you see as of now, there is an anomaly. That the illustrative report that is contained in the standard is different from the illustrative report that is contained in the guidance note. And from that perspective, it is decided now that in future, all the, all the report formats, illustration, et cetera. Will be part of a separate guidance note and will not be part of the standard themselves. This, the same approach Y O F I is now following towards the Financial Accounting Standard side. Where old F A S one used to include illustrative set of financial statements. But now it is issued as a separate technical release, we have issued the illustrative financial statements which are very detailed, quite detailed. And they provide additional guidance on the financial application of Y O F I Financial Accounting Standard as well. But those are not in the level of standard and they will be updated from time to time, they have been issued as a, as a technical release. So the approach now onwards is that the, as far as possible, the illustrative formats will not be part of the standard themselves. Just to make sure that there is no anomaly or redundancy created in future, thank you very much for very good comment. Brother Khalid and Nasr has regarding the explanation note under five F F, further disclosure requirements related to S S B clarifications. Of, of the note ambiguities, of the noted ambiguities. This, actually, this is, this may still be there, this may still be there, for example, like you know, some. This might require some of the professional judgment, for example, the interpretation of the Sharia board is there, but that apparently is against the. Interpretation of a body higher than the hierarchy, higher in the hierarchy, for example, the Sharia standard or something. Those, there can be situations where, where those ambiguities might need to be identified. So they might be identified as key audit matters in the auditor's report, et cetera. But I think we do not need to put it in the definition, it is the auditor's professional judgment as to how he addresses. So if there was a big ambiguity with regard to a matter and he has accepted the clarification by the. By the, by clarification or interpretation by the Sharia supervisory board, but it still, it has significant impact. So it can still be a key audit matter, for example, I'm just giving you one example, but obviously there can be different professional judgment supplied by the auditors. And these cannot be covered within the definition, thank you very much for a good comment, sir. Anonymous attendee, is there Arabic version of the standard, I think Arabic version of the standard is to be issued shortly, we are in the process of that. And going forward, Insha Allah, we will be issuing the Arabic version and will be conducting at least one public hearing in Arabic language as well, Insha Allah. Thank you very much. Brother Sadak Khan says that he agrees with my clarification, thank you very much, sir. We have comment from Abu Bakr in Diallo. Shouldn't we first audit the financial regulation of the institution as well as the content of the manuals used before moving on to operations audit? This is, this is a judgmental part as to how you take the process. Like you know, with regard to the financial, financial policies and the regulations applicable and the requirements of laws and regulations. Requirements of the, the policies and et cetera. So, so lot of these things actually from the financial as well as Sharia part are judgmental and depend on the methodology. So for example, international standards on auditing are the same, but if you go for the big five and other big audit firms. You will find some minor differences between their methodologies, all the methodologies are trying to achieve the objectives of international standards on auditing. But the way those are executed and the way their softwares actually work with regard to implementation of audit might be different. So from that perspective, there has to be some flexibility in the hand of the financial statements. The auditors, in the hand of the auditors themselves. So I think that at the standards level, we should not be going in more detail, but your comment is well noted, we'll take it to committee, thank you very much. We have comment from Brother Mizano Rahman, is it possible to hold at least one public hearing in Bangladesh? Brother, we, we, we will be more than happy to do that. Just to mention, probably our team will be coordinating in due course, Insha Allah. One of the possibilities this year is that we are planning to hold one of the governance board meetings in, in, in Bangladesh. So we will be coordinating with the stakeholders within Bangladesh shortly, Insha Allah. So it is quite possible that we can hold several public hearings or, or a larger event in form of conference or something. Or we can attach to some conference all three D B. or, or a larger event in form of conference or something, or we can attach to some conference also already being held there. Uh, so this is one of the possibilities. We would like to sit with all the important stakeholders within Bangladesh and we'd like to coordinate for a, uh, for a proper visit plan, Insha Allah, uh, this year or next year, preferably this year, Insha Allah. Thank you very much, sir. And on a lighter note, I hope that you are, you are, you are committing full hospitality in Dhaka, Insha Allah. So we, we would love to, to enjoy that hospitality, Insha Allah, thank you very much again. We have comment from brother Hikmat Amin, Jazakallah Khairan, thank you, an event live to held in Qatar. Uh, brother Hikmat, actually, we, uh, we are now, after, you know, because of COVID, a lot of things have changed. But now we are trying to come towards our normal process and we are starting holding some of the public hearings out of Bahrain. And obviously, this webinar option will always be there. You can see that we have more than three hundred registrations and even at this point of time, one hundred sixteen people are there. For some public hearings, we had, we had up to six hundred plus, uh, six hundred plus registrations and nearly two fifty plus participants at a given point of time. So considering this benefit of webinar where our standards are global, even if we try to do it in some countries every time, it is not that easy. But the idea is that yes, we want to now bring things to normal, we want to bring things to ground. As far as possible, we'll try to do these activities. For sure, Qatar will be one of the destinations, Insha Allah, in short term future. Uh, no plan as of now. Uh, I'm sorry, we are going a bit out of topic right now and actually there are a lot of discussion points. Uh, like you know, we have not even been half the standard. But the good part is that most of the definitions and the conceptual part is covered. Now what we have in this standard, I'll just take ten minutes to like, you know, to quickly take you through without taking any questions. And in the end, I will take the questions. So first, I will just like to, like, you know, explain very quickly about the standard and what are the contents of the standard. So now, uh, now this next section is about compliance requirement. So we have compliance requirement for UPI framework, we defined the framework and we discussed it already. We have compliance requirements with UPI Code of Ethics for Islamic Finance Professionals that we have issued as well as the requirement of relevant Code of Ethic, which is IESBA Code of Ethics, International Ethic Standards Board, uh, for accountants or auditors, that board, uh, or has issued a very good code and which is linked with ISAs, so we, we, we would be, uh, like, you know, we, uh, we could make a cross reference to that. Quality management requirements are there with regard to the professional standards, et cetera. And, uh, and, uh, and, and, uh, we, we put the overall quality management requirements and we refer to the international quality management standards issued by the International Standard, Quality, Quality Standard Board. The I, I, whatever is linked with ISAs like Code of Ethics, et cetera, we have referred to that. Only thing is that we, uh, we have added some of the specific additional requirements. Like in fourteen, we have added a specific requirement for having the Sharia experts as well as the experts of applicable financial reporting framework. So like for example, CIPA and other qualifications where these are covered. Then we have requirements, the next section is about conduct of an audit and then it goes in the process flow. So there has to be initiation and acceptance and continuance requirements, including obviously the team related requirements. Uh, most of the requirements are similar to ISAs and we have not repeated everything. But there, there are some preconditions that we have put in, for example, making sure that if you accept an audit, you must have a appropriate team in place. So for example, if, if you are doing an audit of Islamic financial institution, you must have a, have a framework. Uh, you must have experts of the, or accounting framework as well as experts of the Sharia principles and rules. And then we, you need to have this requirement for frameworks compliance with Sharia principle and rule. If the framework is not as per UPI Financial Accounting Standard, then you need to even assess the uh, the, the frameworks own compliance with Sharia principles and rules and the extent of compliance with Sharia principles and rules. Uh, then we have requirements relating to terms of audit engagement. We, uh, which, which were there in a separate standard here, we have put it in one standard and further details we have left for the, uh, for the ISAs. Audit planning and risk assessment section is there then, which where we have discussed about the planning and the risk assessment process. Uh, the most plan, most aspects of the planning and risk assessments aspects are similar to ISAs except for the differences that we have kept with regard to the supplementary opinion of Sharia, of compliance with Sharia principles and rules. Then we have, uh, general audit planning, et cetera, requirements. You can see, uh, see the effectiveness of the Sharia related functions is to be assessed. These are the things which are not there in the conventional auditing standards. So mostly we have emphasized on these additional aspects only. Identifying and assessing the risk of material statement and not direction of compliance with Sharia principles and rules. Again, as I mentioned, the focus is on the value addition that we are making through this standard rather than just replicating the conventional auditing standard. Then we have requirements related to audit materiality in which we have emphasized on the qualitative aspects, including the Sharia, the, the Sharia perspective part. Uh, with regard to, uh, with regard to the, uh, to the, uh, to the materiality, et cetera, we might need to provide more guidance in the standard number four or in the guidelines that we are going to develop, Insha Allah. Uh, assessing the need for involving auditors, experts, obviously, IT, law, tax, valuation, pension, and those experts are needed and obviously Sharia principles and rules related experts are needed as well. For that purpose, I have already explained some aspects, so I will not be going into that detail. But, uh, then we have the requirements related to uh, assessment of, assessment of and reliance on the work performed by the Sharia supervisory board. So we are not saying that if the Sharia board has given a clean opinion, you just give a clean opinion. But we are saying that the work that has been done by the Sharia board itself has a, has a strong basis of reliance for the auditor, if it is up to good quality, then it provides the most important basis of reliance. Then you can put reliance on the work performed by the Sharia auditor, uh, by the external Sharia auditor. If you are yourself external Sharia auditor in that situation, you can, you can rely more obviously based on the work that is already done and you have access to the working papers as well. But if it is, uh, another form of Sharia auditors, then you need to still assess the quality of their work and you have to see their report and place reliance on that depending on the risk assessment and the assessment of the quality of the procedures performed by them. Then we have the analytical procedures related requirements, preliminary analytical procedures are there. Uh, then you have to assess the work of the internal audit function, then you have to assess the work of internal Sharia audit function. Uh, you have to see to what extent their work can be used for the purpose of Sharia audit, uh, of, of, for the purpose of use, use the work of Sharia audit for the purpose of placing reliance as well as you can even use them, use their specific work, assigned work as well as their already completed work, including the reports, et cetera. Again, the core requirements are contained in this standard and further details we, we intend to provide in standard number four. Uh, that's why I'm saying that standard number four and this standard will be finalized at the same time so that there is no redundancy or no overlapping. Uh, the, the minimum requirements will be still contained in this one because it provides the overall framework, but the detailed requirements will be mainly in standard number four. Uh, then we are in the audit execution part, in which we come to audit sampling. Uh, audit sampling related requirements, we have put in, uh, obviously, which have to consider the Sharia related aspects as well and the additional aspects that need to be applied judgmentally on selection of sample. For example, if there is a new Sharia, uh, new Sharia standard, new UPI FAS, those things. So some of those things might need to require to be covered in the sample on a judgmental basis. Uh, then assessment of control environment and test of control, obviously, you need to, you need to assess them for the purpose of financial reporting as well as for the purpose of reporting on the Sharia principles and rules. Then we have, uh, update of the planned approach and combined risk assessment. The combined risk assessment will, will lead you towards the substantive process, substantive procedures that to what extent substantive procedures are to be conducted. Uh, then we have, uh, 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 I don't want to go in detail for substantive procedures again because of the limitation on time. Uh, then we have the supervision related requirements that the work of the auditor shall be, shall be supervised properly, uh, including the work of audit experts, et cetera. So auditor, audit, audit partner cannot say, engagement partner cannot say, okay, this was seen by the Sharia, Sharia scholar. No, you need to, you need to be responsible for the whole work and whole supervision. And obviously, it means that even the, uh, the, the, the audit, audit partner, the engagement partner who is signing the audit report should have reasonable and adequate knowledge with regard to the subject matter. For sure, you cannot be expert in that, but you need to make sure that the expert has worked according to the professional standards. Consideration of fraud and error is there, as I mentioned, standard number five was there specifically on consideration of fraud and error. We have, uh, we have removed, uh, we have, we are going to withdraw with this one. Uh, the, the separate standard and some of the core requirements, including requirements related to Sharia principles and rules related frauds have been included here. Uh, then we have going, uh, going concern risk. Uh, obviously, we are going concern again, we have just put the core principle because further details are already covered in quite detail in the IFRS, oh, ISAs. But, uh, but we have just put the core principles and for details are referred to the ISAs. We have, uh, again, other significant consideration on an ongoing basis. Uh, some of the audit materiality aspects are covered here. Then we have to, uh, uh, these are, again, for first thing, let me clarify this section, other significant consideration during the audit conduct of an audit is about identifying some of the key aspects related to Islamic finance structures, uh, transactions and institutional business model as well as with regard to the Sharia compliance. So some of the additional aspects are to be covered here, which we have identified separately. Then obviously, there are, there are, even in the representations, we need to have additional considerations with regard to some of the aspects and further details probably will be provided in SOA four. There are some specific aspects with regard to the related parties. Uh, because related party aspects that are covered from the, uh, from the, from the, uh, from the perspective of uh, from the perspective of normal financial statement audit are, have some aspects which are not, uh, which, uh, some aspects, but the additional aspects which are related to Sharia non-compliance and the profit and loss distribution and, uh, and, uh, and the, the relationship of the related parties versus other stakeholders, et cetera, are not compared. Where for example, like a transaction that are conducted at a price which is other than arm's length might, might be impacting the, uh, the, 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 the returns of investment account holders, which might not be justified. I'm just giving you one example here, but obviously there are additional aspects that are to be covered. We hope that, uh, we will be providing some additional guidance with regard to these areas in SOA four as well. Continuing liabilities and commitments, obviously, there are additional aspects with regard to Sharia compliance that need to be considered for these purposes. Uh, we, we, particularly, there are areas where we, where the reports uh, of SSB, external Sharia auditor, internal Sharia auditor, compliance department, et cetera, all may have some, 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 some of the consideration that need to be considered. Uh, then we have the documentation, archiving requirements, which are similar to ISAs normally. Uh, except for, uh, one of the comment that was raised by one of our brothers earlier that with regard to some of the aspects which are related to the work of experts and using, placing reliance on others. Uh, those work also need to be properly documented and kept in the working papers and records. So that is additional aspect that we have covered here. Uh, then we have, uh, uh, the, the, the most important part is whatever the auditor's opinion is, there should be evidence supporting to that available in the documentation. This is applicable on both hands, that is the ends covered by ISAs related to the financial reporting as well as the ends which are related to, uh, the Sharia principles and rules or specific business model, et cetera, as we have been discussing about. Then we come to the conclusion part, uh, there has to be a review process for the document, for the conclusion part. And there has to be engagement quality control review. Uh, it's that we have put in some minimum requirements with regard to that, there should be communication with those charged with governance. Uh, we, we, we believe that there are some areas where there might be need for communication with, 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 uh, with Sharia supervisory board also, in addition to those charged with governance. So these are the aspects which are very specific to Islamic financial institutions. Then we have, uh, going concern assessment update, which is common with ISAs and subsequent events again are related to ISAs. And some specific considerations might be there as well, uh, which are covered in one twenty one. Uh, with that, we have next section on the auditor's report. So, uh, so we have requirements on the issuance of audit report and what are what are, how the conclusions are reached and what are the primary opinion and the supplementary opinion and other contents of the auditor report. Main contents of the auditor report include the title, address, the auditor's opinion, including primary and supplementary identified separately. Uh, then we have the basis of corporate opinion, going concern, key audit matters. Uh, then we have management's responsibilities for the financial statements and compliance with Sharia principles and rules, auditor's responsibilities for the audit of financial statements and compliance with Sharia principles and rules. Then we have report on other legal and regulatory requirements, name of engagement partner, signature of the auditor, auditor's address and date of the auditor's report. Uh, then next, the sections below actually explain each of these aspects that what are to be covered in these. And we have, uh, provided some explanation here. And as I mentioned earlier, we intend to provide a detailed guidance with regard to, we, we, we intend to provide detailed guidance with regard to this in a form of illustrative audit report as well. Here, there is one very important aspect that I would like to clarify that, uh, that in respect of key audit matters. Uh, uh, if you see, uh, this one thirty seven, key, key audit matters shall be included in the auditor report similar to the requirement of other established practices of auditing generally related to the auditor's opinion on the truth and fairness of the financial statement, that is the primary opinion only. Accordingly, the CAMs related to institutions' compliance with Sharia principles and rules shall be included in the auditor's report if and only if these are considered to be relevant from financial reporting perspective as a key risk, as an, an observation having a material impact on the financial statement or significant from the perspective of auditor's consideration of compliance with laws and regulations under established practices of auditing. So the point is that, uh, in, in past, when we allowed, uh, the, the, the auditor's report to include key audit matters, in the guidelines, we provided this guidance that key audit matters related to financial audit are to be included and related to the Sharia principles and rules are not to be included. Uh, people ask why, actually, it, it took more than one hundred years to the normal financial statement audit to reach that level that key audit matters can be now included in the auditor's report. Otherwise, it used to be like a single para audit report, they just converted into one page audit report and then converted into two page audit report, now it is a multi-page audit report in form of key audit matters. But considering the Sharia compliance related matters, there are additional risks related to like the, the population at large and the stakeholders at large are not used to key audit matters. So they may misperceive, uh, the, the key audit matters related to Sharia compliance if they are reported. So from that perspective, we have provided an exception of general key audit matters related to Sharia compliance not to be provided. But, uh, but this one will be, uh, like, you know, this, this paragraph will be considered that if they have the financial element or if they have the law and regulation element, then they will be still included in the key audit matters. Other requirements, uh, are like, you know, just explanation of the, of the, of the, of the contents of the audit report that we have discussed earlier. So we have, then we have guidance on the modified opinion, which include qualified opinion, adverse opinion. Uh, we have identified some guidance with regard to how Sharia, Sharia compliance can be, can be, can be relevant. Uh, some, some of the situations are uh, very specific Islamic financial institutions. For example, uh, for example, how, how, uh, how a modification on the Sharia side can impact the, can impact the opinion on the financial side or other way around. How a financial, uh, financial, uh, financial related qualification, financial statement related qualification can impact the Sharia related qualification. So there are some aspects that So there are some aspects that are uh that are there, like, you know, considering different aspects, some of them we have covered here. And maybe for some further guidance might be needed, that we would like to request particularly the audit firms attending here. To provide a specific guidance to us, provide a specific comments to us, how they see about this section on the auditor's report for. Uh I think sister, sister Alia, situmajan, I think we discussed earlier. That maybe a round table might still be needed, we will just see when the time, if the round table is, should be done. Uh uh like, you know, before issuing SOA four or shall we do a round table together with SOA four? But there should be a round table with regulators, accounting bodies, uh overs- oversight bodies. And uh and the audit firms from different countries. So I think that round table is needed, maybe we can replace the third public hearing with a public round table. Because you can see that the time, like two hours, two and a half hours, three hours might not be sufficient at times. You might need to have a full day round table on the key aspects of the, of the standard with the regulators and the market stakeholders. Including the big audit firms. So from that perspective, I think maybe we we can do it at, after issuing SOA four or we can do it before issuing SOA four. But we already have it in plan, only thing is that we need to decide either it has to replace one of the public hearings or not. And secondly, whether it has to be, what would be the right timing for that. So inshallah shortly, we will be deciding and coming back to you guys. Uh then we, uh the effective date part, uh we, we, we intend to finalize it within twenty twenty three. Uh this is standard and SOA four also, we intend to like issue at least. Uh the the idea is by end of twenty twenty three, we should be able to finalize this one in SOA four. Uh additional guidance, as I've mentioned, may be issued over a period of time, except for the guidance report. But our intention is to, is to make it applicable on the financial statements of the institution, beginning on or after one January twenty twenty five. So if the financial statements are twenty five, so effectively, it will be applicable, like, you know, the reports will be issued in twenty twenty six. That might be enough time, but we would like to have more comments from the, uh from the, for the market participants with regard to the effective date. How they feel it would be appropriate and how, how, how long we should allow as a time. This will be replacing, as I mentioned, amendment to other standards, it will be replacing SOA one, SOA two, SOA three, SOA five. It will also, uh along with a new guidance note that will be coming up, illustrative auditor support will supersede guidance note number two. Uh the guidance note number two, auditor's report. Uh 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 but Majan, Alia, please, if you can note, it should be GN three, not zero three and T two is not zero two. Okay?
Okay, okay.
Okay, so with that, I I I'm sorry, I have not taken any comments now because we were, we were already running late. We have run, we have already a bit late now, so now I will take the questions. Uh so let's go for the questions. First is from Sheikh Hisham Masalchi, can you share a model as assigned a risk-based audit plan for IFI? To clarify and paraphrase the engagement that could work on. Thank you very much, actually, we will be providing some guidance inshallah in the guidelines, it will take a bit of time. But it will, it may not be part of the standard, it may be part of the detailed guidelines only, but inshallah, we will be doing that. Thank you very much. Brother Sadakat Khan has a comment, do you have any process to certify the eligibility of auditing firms, including offering external Sharia audit? Brother Sadakat, you have picked a very important point, or rather, you have like, you know, picked, you know, a painful element. That is there in Islamic finance, that this is an important area where we do not have the, where we do not have the, the capacity. Actually, AOFI recently, like, like sometime back, actually, we talked to some of the regulators. And this is something that we might need to do, that we may need to come up with a quality assurance criteria for the, for the Sharia audit firms. And we, 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 we were thinking of forming a Sharia, Sharia, the Sharia audit firms board. Or quality assurance board for, for external Sharia audit. The idea was that that quality assurance board can, 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 it can perform reviews of the. Uh of the quality of the Sharia audit firms that are actually working in the field right now. And based on those quality assessments, we can have a, a sort of a register of, a register of, a register of approved funds. Which means that those firms, those can be, those can be like, you know, audit firms, week four and other firms of auditing. As well as those can be specific or Sharia audit institutions, like we have Rakaaba, we have IFS, we have Sharia Review Bureau etc. So the idea, thank you very much for raising this point, we had this idea in mind, we had some initial discussions. But to be honest, at AOFI, we have opened up already so many fronts that it is not that easy to like, you know, pick up such a huge project. But this is one of the projects that is already in our mind and inshallah, we will, will. But for sure, it cannot happen unless the regulators are willing to support it. Because the regulators actually are the ones who have to prescribe that the firm only eligible. Uh for to perform Sharia audits will be the firm which is subject to this quality assurance board. And we want the, it is not to be run only by AOFI, we want it quality assurance board to be like, you know, uh represented by. Uh by, by the regulators and accounting oversight bodies and the institute of accountants etc. So this is actually something very important which you have identified. I I would just like to mention that we have not like, you know, ignored the concept. But this needs lot of like, you know, effort and resources and considering too much work pressure at AOFI. Probably we had like, you know, been a bit slow in this one. Thanks for reminding again, inshallah, we'll try to pick it up again with the regulators and we'll try to move ahead. Then we have Nuruddin Rahamya, what are the limits between Sharia audit and internal audit? Uh you're talking about internal Sharia audit and internal audit, I believe, brother, Ramadan Mubarak, Ramadan Mubarak to you and all participants. Uh brother, uh it is awful, this discussion is not as a subject for today. What I suggest that if you can just have a look at the internal Sharia audit standard of AOFI, which provides and clarifies the scope. With regard to that, main scope is related to compliance with Sharia principles and rules and implementation of whatever is there related to Sharia. So that is there, but there are, there are some commonalities and there can be some commonalities. What I suggest that you can have a look at our standard, I think I requested our colleagues to already put it in the chat box, a link to the internal Sharia audit standard. I request the team again to provide a link to the internal Sharia audit standard. Uh hopefully, we'll be finalizing the joint Sharia governance framework with the, with the IFSB as well shortly. So inshallah, it will be, uh some of the things will be covered in that standard as well. And hopefully, we'll be coming up with the detailed guidance as well. Sahui Maghuliti, my apologies if I pronounce the names incorrectly, my apologies for that, for anybody's name I misspelled, my apologies. So you are talking about the Arabic version, yes, I mentioned that Arabic version will be issued shortly and there will be. Uh uh there will be, uh uh there will be public hearings in Arabic also. And if you're talking about the public, the Arabic version of the Sharia, of the internal Sharia audit standard, I think. Uh in uh for most of the governance standards, now we are trying to update the Arabic versions as soon as possible. The new ones we are putting in a priority and we are making sure that even the exposure draft is issued in Arabic. But there are some of the standards within, within review at the translation committee of governance board. So I'm not sure about the internal Sharia audit standard as to whether the final one has been issued. Sister Alia or Sister Zaha, if you can clarify it in the chat window, if the Arabic version of the internal Sharia audit standard is issued. Please also provide link to that. Brother Sadakat Khan has said, thanks, so thank you very much sir for being here with you, senior people like you. When you attend, actually, it is like, you know, very much encouraging for us. Thank you very much and thank you for your encouragement and kind comments. So with that, I think we have taken all the, all the, all the questions till now. There is a comment in the chat window also, and normally we take only in the. Uh no, there are two, three comments in the chat window, we just request every time, like, you know, that please put in the Q and A tab. Last question, uh okay, no, I think it is more about like, you know, general comment with regard to the standards, copies and processes. Uh okay, it is about AOFI shall provide downloadable PDF format for issued standards. Uh we, 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 we just want to take, make sure that the final version uh is, 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 you know. Is the same only on, with the one on the, on the web, that is the reason that we have allowed. Just two years back, we allowed soft copies to be available, we need that, these are more needed, maybe in future we will be allowing the PDF copies. But it may take a little bit of time, thank you very much for identifying this thing. But just, uh just, just, we just want to make sure that the standards are available free of cost to all. Uh all stakeholders around the globe who want to have access to AOFI standards, however, the PDF version. Uh we, 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 we understand that PDF version, having too many copies of PDF version have its own issues. So from that perspective, we, 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 we were avoiding that thing, we'll, we'll consider your comments, sir, inshallah. And if possible, in, in short, in short future, uh I think we will try to bring the PDF copies. But maybe it will take a little bit of time, thank you very much. There is, uh then with that, I think, brother Iswan, I think we can conclude now. Because we have already taken a bit of time.
Yes, thank you very much, brother Umar, I think this has been a very engaging and interactive public hearing. Um the second one on this particular standard. Um so you've already answered some of the queries that were in the chat window, so I think some of the general ones, we'll probably get back to them later on. Um if to be answered. Um you know, with that, we would like to thank you everyone for joining us. Um you know, it's not easy to join a public hearing or an event during Ramadan. Uh but we thank you very much for joining us, for, you know, being very interactive. Um and this is the whole purpose of these, these sessions, it's not a one-way communication and, you know, we, this certainly has not been the case today. Um and we encourage you to continue engaging with us so that we can benefit from your experience and you can actually. Um you know, share your input into the, into the standards development process. Um so on this public hearing, this was a second, on this standard, this was a second public hearing. We will inshallah be having at least two more public hearings on this standard as well as the, the round table with the regulators. And other key stakeholders as brother over alluded to. Um at least one of the public hearing will be in Arabic inshallah and the exposure draft will be made available when we announced, when we make the announcement for the. For for the Arabic public hearing. Um of course, this session, as I early mentioned, this session is being recorded as well as it is placed, you know, it is being aired live on YouTube. So if you have to refer to some of the discussions later on, please go back to the YouTube channel and the AOFI page or AOFI channel on YouTube. Um and refer to it, in, in, together with other public hearing sessions are also being, you know, uploaded, the previous ones are being uploaded. And the future one could always be aired on YouTube and they will be there for your future reference. Um if you decide to send in comments by writing, please, you know, send it at governance@aofi.com on this particular standard. Um and once again, if you would like to, you know, if you have other queries um on, on any matters related to AOFI. Or if you wish to explore collaboration with AOFI, please reach out to us at info@aofi.com or you can reach out to me at rmalik@aofi.com. Uh we will only glad and happy to collaborate or explore areas of collaboration, inshallah. Um so with that, I would like to thank you all for joining, once again, I would also like to thank our secretary team. Uh for working very hard on putting together this standard, the, 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 the board and the PASEC committee for this particular standard on auditing. Um and at the end, I would also like to thank our partners for this public hearing, participation banks association of Turkey. Um who has been, who has been very actively supporting the initiatives in the Turkey region. Uh the future of uh sessions will be focused on some of the parties, Southeast Asia region. Um as well as the GCC region. So with that, I would like to thank you once again and inshallah, we will meet again in the future public hearings. For the, for April, we may have some other public hearing sessions, we have not announced it yet, but there will be a number of them, inshallah. But so please, um uh, you know, sign up to the YouTube channel as well as to the. AOFI, subscribe to the AOFI mailing list if you have not already. So with that, I thank you very much, once again, on behalf of AOFI and TK Baby, for joining us today and inshallah, we'll meet again. That, salaam alaikum.